Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Okay, this is the time where public, anybody in the public can call in and, or come in for opportunity to talk to the board. Do we have anybody on?
We did not receive any emails or voicemails with public comment.
Do you want to make that comment about the online again?
Yes, meetings being conducted both in person and remotely due to the current COVID-19 restrictions.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Laura will jump in if she wants more.
Laura? That's it, okay. All right, we'll have a public hearing now on FY 22 budget. Justin?
The board just needs to open the hearing and then hear any comments and then close the hearing.
You have to open the public meeting, the public hearing. You have to open it.
I didn't open the meeting.
You have to open the meeting. What we need to do now is open the public hearing.
Oh, I see, that's right. Public, public meeting. Any comments on the budget from the public? If none, we'll close the public hearing. Justin again.
Yep. And then the second public hearing is the Bond Issue Notification Act. Same thing. The board would need to open the public hearing on the bond issue notification and hear any comments and then close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing's been opened. Any comments on that? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing on that one. Back to Justin. Anything, Justin?
Nope.
Okay. The ultimate bonds are 17 million 800, so. All right, consent agenda. Minutes of the Village Board meeting of February 22nd. Building report for February 2021. Council receivable report for February 2021. Water production report for February 2021. Refuge report for January 2021. Council payable through March 4th, 2021 in the amount of $595,589.22. The cancel of the March Cow Meeting. And ordinance 1904 repealing and replacing the village's official zoning map. Second reading, all on the consent agenda. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, items for separate action. Ordinance 1903, adopting the Unified Development Ordinance. Repealing and replacing the Zorden Ordinance of previous ordinances and regulations. It's going to be the second reading. Jared?
Yes, thank you. Before you this evening is the ordinance that would approve the Unified Development Ordinance that we've been talking about the past few meetings. So, not many changes. I had one update to a monument sign section that, excuse me, that I noticed and a minor tweak there. Past that, we have included the difference in garage size for lots over 20,000 square feet, so we include that into this text. And currently, we have updated the fence matrix. I have a few more things I want to do with that matrix before it goes to the public, but I do think it's a good document for the Village Board to have and to see what is out there currently. We're also, as a part of this ordinance, we're proposing some changes to the, to the village code. Those changes are cleanup in nature. They're basically just there because something in the Unified Development Ordinance would conflict with some existing codes outside of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision control ordinance. So this would repeal the zoning ordinance, subdivision control, and then those sections that are outlined in this document. With that, I'd, and we also have several members of CMAP as attendees here if you do have any questions of them, but with that, I'd ask if you have any questions.
What was the?
I want.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead.
What was the maximum garage size allowed for 20,000 square feet or larger?
Yes, it's the 11,000 square feet that we have proposed at the last meeting. Excuse me, thank you. 1100. It was a big garage. It's just a small difference.
I thought we said we didn't want that.
All right, you wanted people, if they had a larger lot, to be able to build a larger.
Right, they wanted to be, to be able to build a larger garage.
That is.
But I think that we said, and I understand it's bigger than what it is.
Right.
But the 1100, I thought that we didn't like.
It was eight? It's 800 on the smaller lots and 1100 on the larger lots. Is where we ended up last time.
Yeah, but I'm going to say the same thing that I said at the last meeting. If I've got three acres of land, you're not going to restrict me to 1100 square feet for a garage. If I want to build an outbuilding, 1100 square feet's ridiculous. Are they going to come in and ask for a variance?
Yes. I think that was the, well, that's, if I'm not mistaken. That's where we ended up last time. Where we ended up was because of the restriction to the height of the structure in the code, you couldn't really build anything larger than that without getting a variance because of the height's restriction of 15 feet, I think it was.
That is correct.
So that was the issue, is there's a height restriction, so you would have to get a variance for that larger structure anyways. The small number.
So if they want something larger. They just got to go through the process of a variance and come before us and I'm going to tell them yes, okay. All right. Yep, that's fine.
Any other questions? Mrs. Spurling, I believe.
Yes, so I wanted to get some clarification. I, the last meeting, and there seemed to be quite a bit of discussion about this fence height, and I, I was a little confused and really a little surprised with the outcome of that conversation. It seems like the majority said, yes, go ahead with the five-foot height. Is that correct, Jared?
That's what I took away from that meeting, yes.
Okay, so I'm questioning, we have people who have taken the time to let us know they prefer a six-foot height, and we've also had several people come in and ask for a variance, you know, different circumstances. Of course, we, we all remember the gentleman who brought the photos in when his dog was killed. I'm not really clear. I guess I just was very surprised to hear that the majority of the board said, yes, go ahead with the five-foot height. I just wanted to go on record that I, I would prefer the six-foot height, and, you know, clearly I'm outvoted based on the last meeting, but I just want that said, that I, I would prefer to go with the six-foot height, and I think, you know, we leave it up to the individuals in terms of, well, the HOAs and stuff have, had the more stringent rules to them, but I don't think it's right to have part of the community be able to have a six-foot fence, and when the HOA agreements expire, or if they undergo a change and say, yes, we can, we would allow a six-foot height, I just don't think it's right to have it in certain parts of the community and not in other parts of the community. The other part of that, too, is that since I've been involved with the village, it seems like we have an awful lot of situations where we have loose dogs, and I think if we were allowed residents to put in a taller fence, that could perhaps get, you know, that could perhaps decrease, although the other part of that is that you are supposed to be outside with your dog. You're not supposed to leave the dog out there unattended. So, I mean, I can go on about this. Like I said, I watched the last meeting. You guys were pretty much in favor of the five-foot, the five-foot height. I would prefer the six-foot height, that, that's my, my issue with that. I know a ton of work has gone into it. I'm not going to vote no on the, the entire thing because of the six-foot, or because it's going to have a five-foot fence restriction. But again, I just want that out there for public record, that I would prefer six-foot.
Jared, can a person still come in and apply for a six-foot like that last gentleman did for special reasons, or not really now, after this?
So, after this, a six-foot tall fence would have to be a variance request. The issue that that gentleman with the dog that passed away faced was he was, he was in a part of an annexation agreement that limited his height to four feet tall.
Okay.
Are we talking about Mr. Kiebles?
No, I was referring to the gentleman in Fairfield Way whose dog passed away from a different dog.
And I know when Mr. Kiebles came before us and we'd, his, I think that was either BlackBerry or BlackBerry West, I can't remember, but he had come before us because he wanted, there was a registered sex offender that lived in his backyard, and he had requested a higher fence, particularly for that reason, and he'd also requested, because of maintenance issues, he had requested a PVC, and so we knew, because we were going through the process, that we were going to allow those in the increased height, so that's why he kind of, he, he came a little bit before, the, the cart came before the horse a little bit before there, but there was no reason to deny him because of the timing, because we knew we were going to do it.
Well, I think the other thing was the one that the dog got killed. I think later he said he got a big husky or something, and the thing could clear a six-foot fence in a way, so, if I remember right, so it wasn't an issue. Anybody else on the fence issue? Okay, keep going, Jared.
Oh, um.
You're done, okay. How about a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Okay, next we go to Resolution 2021-07, authorizing the use of MFT funds for the 2021 MFT interstructure roadway program. And our Public Works Director will give us a little information on that.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. So before the board tonight is the Resolution 2021-007, as Trustee Lee stated, authorizing the use of MFT funds. So as in your packet, you'll notice that this year does qualify as an MFT year, also utilizing IRP funds for the village's road resurfacing project. Village does move forward with this project with utilizing MFT funds every other year, so this year would be a year, obviously, that we are using those funds. So if there is any questions from the board, I am happy to entertain those at this time.
I have a question. Couple meetings ago, we talked about traffic calming possibilities for the specific, well, one of them was Mayfield. And when are we going to eventually determine if we want to do any sort of traffic calming?
Yes, staff is still looking at options to bring back to you internally.
Okay.
And so we will bring that back to you before construction takes place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we need a.
A move to approve.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, back to Mark again for the award of contract to Builders Paving for 2021 MFT and interstructure roadway in the amount of $2,688,000.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. So as you mentioned, tonight would be the approval for the board to approve contract with Builders Paving. This is a project that did go out to bid. The village did receive three other bids through this process. Builders Paving was the low bidder of those three. Again, this encompasses the work that will be performed starting this year in various areas throughout the village for both asphalt resurfacing, concrete replacement, and signage as well as street striping. If there's any questions from the village board, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions?
Yes.
So is this inclusive of this MFT that we just discussed?
MFT funds will be utilized to pay for this project, correct?
So we have a bid and we're awarding the bid, but we haven't clarified what we're doing yet on the Mayfield Drive Stretch. Is there a contingency in here for those additions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I'll kind of go off of Doug's question. As I saw that, because I kind of have the same question, and if we're, we're awarding a contract in the amount of 2.68 million, and the engineer's estimate was 2.96 million, does that mean that we've got 300,000, just under 300,000?
Under budget.
In our budget to, to mess with as far as for this? You know where I'm going with this.
Justin?
I don't like the phrasing "to mess with," you know.
If I can. So this did come in under budget, however, the project to put the turn lanes in for the entrance to the Public Works Building, the estimate before was roughly $600,000, and upon an update of numbers, it looks like it's going to be around $800,000. So they offset each other essentially.
Okay, but the number that we bid includes dollars towards what we want to possibly do with Mayfield, ballpark. I mean, obviously you don't have every penny covered, but.
Right, they'll, they'll, we'll have to make an adjustment to the contract once we determine what we're going to do, but we believe there's enough money in the contract to make it happen.
Okay.
When I asked that question, I never seen four people want to answer my que, my question so quickly, so it's, I said, oh, we got 300,000 extra. Oh, gone.
No, we don't.
Gone, goodbye.
Anything else, Mark?
Nope, any other questions?
Okay, need a motion to accept the contract from Builders Paving.
Second. Second.
Roll call, Penny.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I didn't even get to write down, we have an extra 300,000. It was gone before I could even write it down.
It's better faster than you can.
All right, next is Item D, award of a contract to Bisping Construction for Parkview Drainage Basin Maintenance in the amount of $184,052, and this is also under budget, so Pete?
Yeah, so just a little background, the Parkview Drainage Basin was constructed right around 1975 for the purposes of providing flood protection to Parkview Estates and Marbury Manor area, and it also serves as a detention basin for those subdivisions. It was built using funds from what was then the Illinois Department of Transportation, Office of Water Resources, later became IDNR Office of Water Resources. But as the local agency, it's our responsibility to provide maintenance on the basin from time to time as needed. So the purpose of this work is to just do routine maintenance on the basin, replace a retaining wall, clear some trees, remove some material, restore the area so it functions as it was designed to function. We've done it a couple of times in the past, but this is probably one of the more large-scale maintenance operations. So we did put it out for bid, we had five bidders. We have a new contractor we haven't worked with, as Trustee Lee said, Bisbee Construction out of New Lennox. We did check their references and they came back very good, so we are recommending to accept their bid and award the contract to Bisping Construction Company out of New Lennox in the amount of $184,052, and that's approximately 28% under the engineer's estimate. So happy to answer any question.
Engineer Wallers, can you give us some examples of work they've done with other municipalities, please?
I can get that for you. I don't have it in, someone else in our office checked it, and they just wrote back the different municipalities that they had worked for, but I can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, question. Oh, go ahead, Doug.
I'd say with the, the variance between the high and the low being, you know, pretty much 75K, is there a, are we certain that Bisping has, has bid the project this, with the same kind of scope that V3 and Wilkins? It just seems like with those four or five bids, you've got two that are similar, and then you've got two that are really high and one in between the other two. It just seems like that, that's a significant spread for two of the four to be $75,000 apart.
If, you know, it's, anytime you get into analyzing bids, you know, we were happy that we had, you know, two low bidders that were quite close, the Bisping at 184, then we had Earthworks at 189, and then Landmark was 213, and then we jumped, as you said, to V3 and to Wilkinson, and they were like 256 and 260. So, you know, what accounts for that? Well, sometimes it's, if you start looking at the numbers, it's all over the place. You know, Bisping and the, in the detailed bid tab, they used $10,000 for their clearing and tree removal, and for example, Earthworks used 30,000. So it just kind of varies, and it might be items that they have to subcontract, or, you know, they're not proficient at, and so they bid those particular items. There were, you know, 17 items that were broken out on the plans, you know, that were tallied, so yes, I, I'm not concerned about that, I guess, because of the two lowest bids were quite close, and sometimes it's, you know, people may or may not be, they may say, well, if I get it for my price, I'll, I'll take the job, but if, if, if not, you know, I'm not going to, I'd really try to go after it. So you sometimes get that on your bids as well.
I have a question related to, so I'm assuming this is not a naturalized basin?
Correct. It's, it was, it was, right, it was manmade. Some of the vegetation inside the basin, though, has become wetland vegetation.
All right, I'm making, because this predates the push to get to naturalized basins.
Right, it wasn't designed with that in mind, but as a function of just the way it operates, it, you know, it holds water, it's got soils that are conducive to native vegetation, so you do get some wetland plants in there.
Okay, thank you.
And Engineer Wallers, that's the area that gets, when we get a significant rain, gets pretty backed up with the water? Am I, am I thinking of the right place?
Yes, so this is the basin that has, so the original design for this basin was, like I said, was done, you know, circa 75, and it was at that time designed for what they expected to be a 100-year storm. Now, we've had three, three revisions to the, what is considered a 100-year, you know, statistical 1% storm, that storm that would occur, that flood that would occur once every 100 years, you know, 1% that it would happen in any given year. So the first basin was designed using rainfall that was generated under a, like an old standard, it was technical paper 40, I think it was. So anyway, that's what the design was. In 1983, the basin was overtopped, so you would have, that was a significant flood in the village, and then it again was overtopped in 1996. So that's an area that has flooded twice, and you'll recall that in 1996, the village, there was a national disaster area declared in the village, and we did buy out 30 homes in that area. So, yeah, that, it's an area of frequent flooding. Now, the basin does provide some flood relief for lesser storms, but if we have another 100-year event, you know, it will overtop again.
Okay.
Any other questions? Need a motion then on awarding the contract?
So moved. Second.
Take the roll, Penny.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Thank you.
Okay, next is E, Ordinance 909, adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2022. This is first reading. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. In front of the board tonight is Ordinance 1909, adopting the, the budget for fiscal year 2022. We went through the general fund at the last meeting, and then we will be going through the remainder of the funds under items for discussion later tonight. Included in the packet is the ordinance itself, and then the numbers portion is actually included under Item A and Items for Discussion. There is no action needed by the board tonight, so.
Okay, we'll be voting on it for the second reading next end of March.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Any questions, anybody? All right, we'll move on to F. Amendment to Resolution 2021-006, approving an agreement between the Village of Montgomery and JB Commodities with regard to tree preservation requirements in the Montgomery Business Park. Jared?
Thank you, Trustee Lee. Before you this evening is a document that may look somewhat familiar to you. We actually had an agreement with JB Commodities brought before you in early February. JB Commodities had their engineer review our exhibit and wanted to include a few sections in the exhibit, and he fine-tuned it and ultimately, ultimately with some fine tuning, the number of acres of tree mitigation on this property in the Montgomery Business Center was reduced down to 18.5, so that you multiply that by two for the acreage, it's 37 trees, resulting in a fee in lieu of 11,100. So we are requesting that this resolution be approved and supersede the previous resolution. I also do have Kathy West representing, Attorney Kathy West representing the petitioner here if you have any questions for her.
I have a question. So where do these funds go?
Yeah, they will be placed into a tree mitigation fund, and that fund will be used to, for the village to install trees in other locations.
Throughout the village?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I hope the petitioner understands that they're getting one hell of a deal. I, you know, deal with this kind of all the time, and a lot of times in Chicago, one six-inch tree, they, the Bureau of Forestry may deem that value at like 15,000 or 20,000 for one tree. So they're getting a hell of a deal, that two trees per acre for 300 a tree, so I hope they realize that.
I believe that, that they do.
Any other questions? All right, how about any motion for this amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Penny.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Lee.
Yes. The next is Ordinance 1909. The next is ordinance 1910, authorizing the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to hire police officers through lateral training.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, we submitted ordinance 1910 for all the review. Yes, we're looking to authorize the Police Fire Commission to hire from a lateral transfer list. We do have a vacancy. We're looking for another avenue to recruit and attract some qualified individuals for employment in the police department.
Sounds like a good idea. I notice other towns are doing it, so... This is the first reading. So, any questions for the chief?
See, it might be inherent. I missed it. How does the lateral transfer list work? Should you able to be able to kind of restock that candidate list for young folks who are hoping to get into the police force?
Well, that's actually up to the Police Fire Commission. They have the option of hiring off of either list. As you know, currently, we don't have an eligibility list. So, we up them. If we brought forward a candidate, like we normally do off our existing eligibility list, we bring forward a qualified individual. They actually do the "yay or nay" for hiring. We do the same thing. We tell them we've got two available lists, and so when we finish the process of both lists, we'll have two lists, they can hire off for either one. Sometimes you just won't like anybody else on your lateral transfer list, and you'll go back to your other list.
Do we have to follow the lateral transfer list in order?
No.
Okay. We have to follow the other list in order, though, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Board, okay if we place this on consent for the next meeting?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's fine.
All right. Sounds good. Everything goes to consent agreement next meeting for second reading. Request H is request from BFW to waive the raffle bond requirement.
Yes, our current ordinance for raffle requires you to have a bond to protect wrongdoing by those running the raffle. They're requesting to waive that because they have a fidelity bond currently on their officers, and so we should need to bring that to the board to see if you're okay with them using their current bond.
Have we historically done that? Because they've done raffles for years, right?
Yeah, I don't recall it before, so I can't tell off the top of my head.
They may not have realized that they had, you know, that they had coverage on... And just followed, you know, what they needed to do, get the raffle license.
That's possible.
Another reason why I know about this is when Rotary does a raffle, and we have to go through this. But we don't keep a standing bond like they do, so...
This is the first time I recall that we've been asked to review the raffle bond, so I'm just... I can't speak to what...
I cannot hear... I cannot hear you.
Hello? Okay. Oh, okay. Yes, this is the first time we've been asked to review their bond, so there were certain issues, just that it didn't comply with the village's specific code, but it is a bond that they have. So, yeah, that's why it's coming for us the first time. It just did not come before the village before.
Thank you.
I think Arthur Gallon is one of the biggest risk companies, aren't they? I think they are, so... All right. How about... Need a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
First.
Right. All right. Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right. Items for discussion. Review our capital improvement, infrastructure improvement, and water and other funds. Up to Justin.
Thank you, trustee Lee. In front of the board tonight is... We will discuss the motor fuel tax, capital improvement, infrastructure improvement, TIF number two, debt service, water, water improvement, and vehicle reserve funds. The... You should have at your station actually a new packet. The paper copies that were handed out last week, actually, it was front and back, and Debbie did not realize that, so you should have a new one at your...
Sorry, get rid of the old one. That was my next question, because why do I have two packets?
Yep.
I have a double-sided.
Yeah, but it's page seven and page nine. You're missing page eight. She made the copies double-sided, but she didn't realize the original was two-sided.
That's where they were talking bad about it.
Justin, can I have a copy, please?
What's that?
Is there a copy around somewhere?
Thank you.
Mine looks correct, sir.
The one that's stapled to your packet is no good.
Some packets were caught before they were picked up, and so some had the right page.
Yeah, I was gonna say, mine looks fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody had the right thing. The public hearing and first reading of the budget took place earlier this evening. As trustee Lee stated, the second reading and approval of the budget is scheduled for March 22. The motor fuel tax fund is used to account for motor fuel tax allocations from the state of Illinois. Actually, this item was on the agenda for approval earlier this evening. The village expects to receive approximately $1.2 million of revenue during fiscal year '22 and has budgeted $1.4 million of motor fuel tax to complement the IRP program. The capital improvement fund accounts for acquisition, construction, and improvement of major governmental capital assets. The chart below shows approximately 75% of the revenue for fiscal year '22 coming from utility taxes, being electric, natural gas, and telecommunications. The charges for services item that is included in there would be development fees paid by builders. Williams Architects completed a space needs analysis for a new public works facility in fall of 2020. The village has been working with Engineering Enterprises, Williams Architects, and Camosi Construction. Since that time, on the design of a new public works facility, the village will issue approximately $15 million in bonds to pay for the facility in April 2021 and expects to start construction in August of 2021. The infrastructure improvement fund, this is the other side from motor fuel tax. Non-hormal sales tax revenue is budgeted at $3.5 million in fiscal year 2022. Just a note for the board, we've received over $20 million since this non-hormal sales tax was activated in 2015. The village expects to spend approximately $1.6 million on the IRP program, $900,000 on shared youth use path engineering and construction, and then approximately $870,000 on the entrance to the new public works facility in fiscal year '22. TIF number two fund. The village has completed a storm sewer overflow study and a transportation study during fiscal year '21. Land acquisition will commence in fiscal year '21, and engineering and construction will then get underway in fiscal year '22. In regards to the water fund, a water consumption rate increase of 5.5% is included in the fiscal year 2022 budget based on the 2018 water rate study. It's necessary to maintain the long-term viability of the water system and provide for a future alternate water source. You can see in the packet the increases there to resident and non-resident rates. In fiscal year 2021, the village completed lead service line replacement project, partially funded by a $1 million IPA forgivable loan. Water meter replacement of commercial industrial properties is expected to take place in March and April before the end of the fiscal year. And then we have budgeted to replace 1,700 residential water meters in fiscal year '22. Towards the end of fiscal year '22, we would then put up our fixed point reading system, which will assist in our intent of moving forward with monthly billing. Water improvement fund, there's three main projects included for fiscal year '22. The first is Route 31 Water Main Replacement, just under $600,000. And then the rehabilitation of wells four and eight, just under $400,000. Last is the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. The village transfers the applicable amount from the general fund and water fund each year to fund the VERF. The fiscal year '22 budget includes replacement of three police vehicles and the purchase of one new public works truck with number of attachments. The village is in the process of building up the fund balance, which is expected to increase by roughly $240,000 in fiscal year '22 in order for the VERF to be fully funded by fiscal year 2029. If there are any specific questions, I can answer those at this time. Again, we would bring this back to the board for approval at the March 22 board meeting.
I have a question. On the vehicle reserve fund, the reason that we're putting that much money in was because in 2013, we were way...
We didn't have any.
We didn't really have any, right. We've gotten six...
Started it.
We've gotten six Tahos and had an outlay of cash for the Tahos and...
It was actually negative $10,000 in 2013, so...
And so now we have a responsible path to replacing our vehicles in a timely fashion?
Yes.
I knew that. I just wanted the public to know that.
Thank you for bringing that forward to us, Director Van Boren. I have a question related to the replacement of the water meters.
Yes.
And you said if I had detailed questions, you're gonna answer them, so no help. Are we doing that in-house, or are we contracting that out?
All right. I can speak to that, and if Mark would like to add anything. We have included in the budget to have a contractor come in and do roughly 1,200 of the 1,700, and then we would do 500 of those meters in-house.
Okay. Primarily the residentials are we doing?
That's correct.
All right. I kind of remember that from previous meeting, but thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
The company doing that has a good record?
We haven't gone on to this for that. We're putting together an RFP currently. The residential meter replacement won't take place until after May 1st, when the new fiscal year starts. The commercial...
I can't hear Mark.
Can you hear me now?
No.
All right. The residential meter replacement won't take place until after the new fiscal year begins FY '22. The commercial industrial replacement meter process will be taking place in... Through the duration of this fiscal year. That will be done by village staff primarily, but we're also assessing how much funding we have. We may utilize contractors to do some of that work as well. A lot is going to depend, be dependent on the timeframe in which we're allowed to get into these properties and be able to get this work performed.
Okay. One of the reasons I ran for trustee was back 20 years ago. Mr. Derocher hired a company that... Out of Michigan, that had great references, how good they did in Michigan. The gentleman that did the water meter in my house drilled a hole through my foundation, which was bigger than the wire going through, so every animal could come through it. And then he asked my wife, because he forgot his stapler for her stapler, and she staples paper too. She handed it to him, and he took the wire along the side of the railing and stapled it with that stapler. I went over and just went bonkers on Mr. At the time. And it was just a bad deal, because I said, "How could you give a contract to somebody from Michigan?" And they didn't even hire people from Michigan, so nobody knew what they were doing. I just hope we don't end up with that same problem.
Yeah, let's not use those guys.
Noted.
Yes, thank you.
Or if we do give them a heavy-duty stapler.
Yes, that would have been nicer, but that's all my wife had, was a hand one. Plus, I couldn't believe the guy forgot it.
We'll do Denny's house first.
Yeah, that's right. That's for sure. All right. That will be...
I have a question.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Teresa.
I do have a question. And this may have been covered in our two-by-two meetings. Can you touch on what is going to be involved in the rehab? The rehab of wells four and eight, what are we going in expecting that we're going to do?
I am going to defer to engineer Wallers on this.
Thank you.
Sure. So, every time we do a well rehab, we obviously pull the pumping motor out, inspect the column piping, do any replacement or repairs on the column piping, also do any repairs or replacement of the motor and/or the pump assembly. So, it's fairly typical that we look at every component, and it just depends on the wear and tear in the particular well as to whether or not we'll have to replace the motor or the pump or rebuild the pump. Just depends on the condition after we get the equipment out. The other thing that we'll look at is whether or not there's an opportunity to increase the specific capacity of the well to make it perform better. So, for example, on the current well, 14, that we're looking at, we did put an allowance in there for some well development. And so that could be... There's various techniques. It can be used, everything from air bursting or hydraulic jetting or, in the extreme, using explosives to break loose material in the annular space to increase the ability for water to get into the borehole. And that usually depends on what we see just before we go out for the bid to determine whether or not we think that's gonna be useful expenditure for the village fund. So, we review the equipment, and then we also review the capacity and the performance of the well. And then we make our decisions as to what to recommend back to the board.
Would the pumps that do wells, would they be the oldest pumps that we're using at this point? Or the, I would say, like, are they the ones that are like the most due to be inspected?
So, we try to do our maintenance on a seven-year cycle. So, these are the wells and pumps that are... Or the wells that are fitting into that seven-year maintenance cycle. I can... We can get for you the motors and the age of the motors and the pumps vary based on the last time that we perform maintenance. Sometimes, you know, we have... I know that we have some motors that date back into the '50s, but oftentimes, they've been replaced, you know, throughout their history. So, but we do have a schedule that shows all of the pumping motors that we have in the village. We can get you a copy of that for your record.
Yeah, Teresa, I also asked Mark one time about why well 14 always shows up on our work orders all the time, and he explained to me there's more than one well that's attached to 14. You want to explain that again?
So, correct. So, a lot of times, we unfortunately use well 14 as a reference for our Fairfield Treatment Center. So, we've got multiple wells that feed into that treatment facility before water goes out. So, specifically, well 14 and 15 do feed into that facility for processed water. One other thing to mention, trustee Spurling. In regards to well four primarily, that well was... uh, Trustee Spurling, in regards to well four primarily, that well was actually slated for rehab, uh, two years prior, uh, to this, and unfortunately, we had the issues with our well fifteen failure, um, that we had to push well four off, um, to accommodate those repairs. And then on top of that, uh, we started to see, because of the well fifteen issue, we were over utilizing well fourteen and started to see our pumpage, uh, start to drop off on fourteen. So, again, we supplemented, uh, well fourteen as the next rehabilitation project in light of, uh, well four. So, that's why you're seeing well four, uh, specifically now, is because it's been passed out, uh, to previous rehabilitations. Um, and we are starting to see pumpage, uh, drop slightly on that well as, as well. Uh, so again, just highlights why we try to move forward with, uh, our seven-year cycle.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one.
All right, Tom.
It's Mark or Justin. Uh, delinquent water fees, we're showing year-to-date estimate ending at thirty-two thousand, but the twenty-two recommend is sixty-seven. Um, I know eighteen and nineteen, it was sixty-six, but then it went down to forty-six. Twenty-one is thirty-two. What's the, what, like, maybe my question's twofold. What's the difference between nineteen and twenty that we collected twenty thousand dollars more in delinquent fees? Why has that dropped now down more than half of what we're estimating for this year? And then why would we estimate that this year's fees will double, will, will collect double those fees next year?
Can I guess? Did we waive late fees this year?
What's that?
Did we waive late fees this year?
We waived late fees this year.
Hey!
And, um, we, we also did not, uh, um, we also, uh, did not shut off for a period of time. Um, I mean, we shut off for us, but we did not shut off for Fox Metro, so that you'll see some of those fees in that number as well, so that's.
Thank you. I knew. I also wanted the public to know that, too, that the village waived about thirty thousand dollars in late fees this year.
On top of the, we gave that hundred-dollar credit.
Correct.
And that was in, I was just talking about that. That was within, like, the first two or three weeks of COVID, wasn't it, that we rushed that through?
I think it was for the month of April, I think.
Yeah.
It was for the month of April.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, so it was pretty quick. So, again, thank you to staff for being so proactive on behalf of the residents and helping keep everybody afloat.
Absolutely.
Justin or Mark, would, why don't you explain the turn-on, turn-off? How much is it each time, or how do, how do they work that now?
So, the current fee, uh, to, um.
Fifty bucks.
Turn, uh, the water back on, um, we call it the delinquent, uh, delinquent fee, um, is fifty dollars, uh, each time. Um, and then, um, we also, uh, receive funds from, like I said, Fox Metro, uh, when they do their shut-offs, which they have not been doing, um, since COVID started, so.
We don't get that fee?
We haven't been. Um, they charge that fee to their customers, and then we bill them, uh, for that same number. So, let's say they collect a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, then we will bill them for a thousand dollars, and then they'll pay us that money.
And there's no charge to put it back on once they pay?
Correct.
It's one fee. It's one fee.
It's one fee.
Right. We shut it off for free. Yes, right. You have to pay to have it turned back on. Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Are we into new and unfinished? Is that where we're at right now?
Yeah, that's new and unfinished, yeah.
All right, um, some residents have expressed concern to me, and I don't think there's anything that the village can necessarily do about it, but there's been more and more run-ins with coyotes. Is there anything, because of the, the timing of the year, or is there anything that we can, any guidelines or anything from IDNR or, or anything? Because the coyotes are becoming more and more of an issue.
Sure. Uh, I, I, I understand, uh, the issue. I can't say as though I've been aware of this. Uh, I have not received any complaints. I don't know if the chief, if you guys have received anything, or Jeff administrated.
Justin, we received on social media, you have to understand, it's mating season for the coyotes right now. Um, we have put out several community service bulletins to please keep an eye on your small animals. Um, other than that, uh, DNA does have several links on their website that you can follow for advice. I highly recommend you do that.
Okay. That's what I thought. I will direct them to, uh, is it IDNI?
IDNR.
IDNR or IDA?
IDNR.
IDNR?
For natural resources.
Thank you.
Plus, the males are out chasing the females this time of year, so they're probably seeing them more often. All right, um, I'm wearing my Iowa shirt. I was in Wisconsin gear, and Iowa beat Wisconsin, and my grandson goes to Iowa and was on campus emailing me during the whole game, so I had to wear this all day. I'll be back with Wisconsin stuff later. You lost the bat, is what I'm hearing. Yeah, I did. And you kept, you know, I kept saying, "Just get five ahead," well, they never could, and Iowa has that big center.
You kept telling me that during the Ohio State game, too.
Yeah, we did that. Steve and I did with the Ohio State game, and, uh, and then Michigan State beat Michigan, so the Big Ten's looking tough, though, so. Anything else on unfinished business?
Yes, today is International Women's Day.
International what?
International Women's Day.
Oh, women's. I thought you said lemon. I'm sorry. Okay. I got you, Teresa.
I guess, I, it's probably a good thing I'm not there, you're right.
I'll tell my wife that when I get home.
Yes. Say something nice to your wife for, uh, International Women's Day.
You just can't make this stuff up.
I see all my fellow board members with their head down laughing. That's fantastic.
We all think of you dear. We really do.
Happy International Women's Day.
I, I'd just like to point out and thank the, some of the Montgomery PD, Chief and I were talking about it, uh, this weekend was polar plunge, which obviously was not held in its true fashion. Um, but several of our officers did get together and raise some funds for Special Olympics and did a little, I, I kind of think it was kind of more like that, uh, ice challenge. They were taking pictures of frozen water with ice cubes and throwing them on each other. But again, I appreciate the enthusiasm and participation by our officers to continue to work hard. And I also was out at the Big Vex event out at Yorkville High School last weekend and saw, uh, Deputy Chief Sanders and Commander Diaz out there helping out and working, working with the crowd control out there. So, thank you for participating and helping with that. Thank you, Chief. There you go, guys. Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Meetings.
Meetings.
Pardon?
Meetings.
Next meeting.
Oh, next meetings. All right. Future meetings: Beautification Committee, Wednesday, March tenth. Historic Meeting, Monday, March fifteenth. Committee, the whole meeting has been canceled for Tuesday, March sixteenth. Intergovernmental Meeting, Monday, the twenty-second at six, and the Village Board Meeting, March twenty-second at seven. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? And Trustee Lee?
Yes. Night, Teresa. I'm gonna go home and make some lemonade.
Apparently, yes. Mm-hmm. Good night, everyone.